Could I have a roll call, please?
Thank you, good and good evening. Councilmember Barbara Spector.
Here.
Councilmember Marie Gossiak.
Here.
Councilmember Marcia Jensen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Leonardi.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Rob Rennie.
Here. If I can get my mic turned on here, extra mic. Okay, so it looks like my pledge leader has not made it, so I will get to do pledge for a second time today if you could stand and join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, looks like we're skipping a couple items on here, so next up is council town manager reports. So let's start with Councilmember Spector, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to last week's special meeting, I had meetings over the last two weeks with community members on a variety of topics. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sec.
Okay, so in addition to last week's meeting, I joined the youth commission on their field trip to Sacramento. This is for Assembly District 28 Youth Commissioners, and the Legislative Committee of the Cities Association also met, and at that time, there were four items that we submitted letters of interest on.
Thank you, and I'm jealous, I wanted to go on the youth commission, that would have been fun, to go with them. So, things I have done since the last council meeting, I met the VTA Policy Advisory Commission, met, and the Cities Association Board, met. Also, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Risk Oversight Committee, met, and I also, for the first day of school, handed out walk and roll stickers for the safe routes to school, encouraging the kids and parents to have their kids walk or ride to school. Also, the policy committee met, since then, on August 16th, we talked about our flag policy and our major mayor changeover policy. Also, this past weekend, on August 18th, I attended Jim Bell's Los Gatos Creek cleanup, and I had some good jokes on Facebook, because as I pulled a chair out of Los Gatos Creek, of course, they got a picture of me pulling the chair out that went on Facebook, and people wanted to know if chairs were native to Los Gatos Creek. I said, "No, we just do a lot of business here in Los Gatos, and offices in the creek" or something, so. Anyway, that was, it was kind of fun, actually, do the creek cleanup. And then also, today, I met with the Silicon Valley Clean Energy CEO and our current Chair of that Board to work out the CEO review process. That's it for me. Vice Mayor Leonardi.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Since our last regularly scheduled meeting, of course, we had the special meeting, as was mentioned by Councilmember Spector. I met with members of the community as well, and I also attended the West Valley Sanitation District Board of Directors Meeting on August 8th. There was no agenda items, it was all consent, so the meeting was short, like me.
It's good, we're getting the humor in tonight. Councilmember Jensen.
Are you short? In addition to the special meeting, I also attended the policy committee meeting with the mayor.
All right, thank you. Town Manager Matters.
Thank you. I'd like to encourage families to sign up for the school bus program. Signups are already underway, and they're going quickly. You can sign up at www.losgattoc.gov/schoolbus. We're excited about the enthusiasm for the program so far. We also are accepting applications for Leadership Los Gatos, those who are being accepted through the Chamber of Commerce website. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up on our agenda is the consent agenda of 12 items. Would any member of council wish to pull an item from consent? Seeing none, would any member of the public wish to pull an item from consent? I assume the clerk has no cards. Nobody coming forward, I'll close the, or not close that, I'll come back to council and see if we have a motion. Councilmember Jensen.
Move approval of the consent calendar, including item 12, which we have out of order in our packet.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any discussion, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. And we are now on to verbal communications. Would any member of the public wish to address us on an item that is not on the agenda? You have three minutes. I have a card for Chris Wiley, please come forward.
Good evening. What I have is something that'll be, I believe, next month, and I will not be in town. And what it has to do with, we had upgraded an ordinance having to do with feeding of animals out in the public, and I really support this, and I hope you seriously support it. Our area between Highway 17 and Santa Cruz Avenue going uptown terrace is exceedingly full of food put out by a couple of women continuously at all hours, and it has gathered a great deal of skunks, raccoons, additional squirrels, and lots and lots of cockroaches, enough that it looks like a snake if you're not careful. You have to look on the ground, and I put my phone, lit my phone, and I thought it was going to be a snake, and it was a row of cockroaches. This continues even after neighbors have asked the people to stop. One lady picks up at least once a week a 50-pound bag and gets out at 5:30 in the morning and just spreads it all over, all the way up to Safeway, the back of Safeway, the back of the VCA, et cetera. They say that they're feeding feral and abandoned cats that were left by previous tenants. Now, how you can tell, maybe if they got a collar that says F and A or something for abandonment and feral, I can't see how they can tell. But what we are doing is inviting these skunks, and I, anybody want to come to my house, I will take them down that street, and they can hear them crunching away, then the skunks get in a fight, especially during mating seasons, not only do they smell, but the screams are outrageous. Coyotes actually come through the bocce court, through my plants, through my lawn, and down the alleyway to go after the skunks and the other stuff. So, I support this. I had written to the attorney a year and a half ago and said, "Could we upgrade this?" I see it passed on June 19th, but there's also some rumblings from the women that they're going to come in and ask if they get an exception to feed these feral and abandoned cats, and I hope you don't support that, because we have enough problems, especially with the cockroaches. It's outrageous, outrageous. Winter, too, not just in the summer. I wrote letters and sent it to each of you. I could not press that little button that it would go to you personally through the town stuff, so went other ways, except for yours, I found yours later, after I talked to somebody at the office, or else I would have sent it to the main email for all the council members. So that's my two cents. I'm sorry, I won't be here next month, I've been called back to Washington, so if I can call in, I'll say the same thing.
Let me see if you have questions. Let's start with Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Wiley, I just want to confirm, you have sent a letter supporting our ordinance?
Yes, I have. I sent it this morning, I know it'll go in the next package. I did put it in there, and I pretty much said the ladies' names, I don't want to say them tonight, but I tell you, they closed the bocce court for 24 hours because they had to fumigate, because a skunk walked in one evening while they had people there, and the cockroaches are just...
Okay, so then, to staff, have you interfaced at all before this, before the ordinance?
Yes, I personally talked to the head attorney and his assistant to say if there's help, what do they need. We've talked to, I've talked to the enforcement, I've talked to the police, talked to animal control, we've talked to neighbors, we don't want it to become a vigilante or anything, but it's serious, it's serious. Those cockroaches are actually getting into cars, and people are taking them to work.
Okay, thank you.
You don't want to hear more about that. Did you have a question, Vice Mayor Leonardi?
Simple question. You support the ordinance as it's written, no modifications?
Correct, I do, I do. And the second part that I say is, "Let's enforce it." In other words, I understand phone calls have to be made, you're just not going to have a patrol out there to say, "Oop, caught her again," but if people take pictures of these people, I hope we can enforce it. If it takes court time, they go to court, I think some of the neighbors are willing to do this. So it's a two-way street. I realize we have a lot of ordinances, that if you say, "Hey, we don't enforce that ordinance," the answer I get is, "We have to get a phone call from the public before we go in and enforce it." For example, our signage, if, you know, there's a lot of signs going up all over the place, they're really not allowed, but unless we call in each individual sign and document it, the enforcement guy, even though he's looking right at that sign, that's not legal, they're not going to enforce it. But I want this to be followed through with enforcement, that when a woman tells me while she's putting the food out, "Oh, they'll never put me in jail," I'm not asking to put her in jail, but if she gets fined a couple of times, maybe she'll slow down.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Wiley. Would anybody else wish to speak to us? Coming forward, Angelia Dorner.
Hello, Angelia Dorner, a still proud, but prior resident of the Almond Grove. I was not going to do a verbal tonight, but Chris, welcome back, by the way, you're always overseas. Thanks for your service. Anyway, she mentioned something that has been on my mind for a couple of months, and so I thought that I would say it as well. A number of times, I have been questioned by people earlier in the year when I was gone and stuff, about getting individual email addresses for each of you. I know that they used to be pretty prominent on the website, and I was a little confused as to why, you know, are people calling me for that, which, I guess it didn't surprise me, since I used to do a lot of communication with the neighborhood, anyway. But I did realize that back in March, I actually sent something, which was 45 minutes late for a desk item, and asked, I sent it directly to just the council, which normally, I do it to the council and to each of you individually. And my understanding was that at least a number of you did not get that email. So I didn't expect to see it in a desk item, it was definitely not printed as a desk item, which is fine, but I was very confused at the time, just didn't have the time to follow up, as I was still at Indiana, about that. And then I noticed on the website, just recently... It's okay, for this, it's okay. On the communication page for the website, it just has the town council address and the manager address, and if you want to get individual members, yourselves, your emails, you have to go to your picture, you have to click to get your email, and then go in and copy it one at a time to whatever address line you want. And I could have sworn there was a place right there on the communication page that had all of your emails listed individually, as well as the town council address. So I would ask that you change that, or correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't matter, but the other thing is that I will give this thing dated March 6th, having to do with cut-through traffic. I will just give this so that there's indication of the timing and whatnot, the date stamp is three hours ahead, because it's from Indiana. But if you could just follow up and maybe confirm whether it really was ever really delivered to a council member's individually. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Dorner? I guess I would just say, for the public, our council emails are not private, and they're fairly simple, it's first name, last name, at losgattoc.gov, so if you have trouble finding it, hopefully you can spell our names.
First initial.
That's what I meant, first initial, last name, and @losgattoc.gov. All right, anybody else wish to address us on verbal communications? Seeing none, I'll close the verbal communications, and, oh, Councilmember Spector, go ahead.
Question of staff, is there any reason we couldn't put our individual email addresses on communications page?
We would put your town emails on that communication page, yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember Sec.
So, just while Ms. Dorner was talking, I actually went onto the website. So, under the contact us, it actually does have all our emails underneath, so I just asked staff to double-check, maybe there was a day where it was down. But just for note, for public, all of our emails are right under our names, if you just click on it, I'm looking at it right now. So if I could just ask the town manager to see what platforms it's not working with and try and fix that?
We'll look into it, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'll move on to Agenda Item Number 10, which is Discussion of RENA Subregion.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you is a discussion as to whether or not our town council is interested in participating in a countywide regional housing needs allocation subregion. This is an item that's been discussed for many different RENA cycles, and now, for the first time, we actually have an institutional framework that is being proposed by the Cities Association, and I'll go through the highlights for you. The Cities Association Board created a task force a number of years ago with elected officials, as well as some professional staff, myself included, and we've been going through the pros and cons of creating a subregion, what it really means, and what the institutional framework should be. So, the bottom line is that there is interest on the part of some cities to come together to create our own RENA methodology. We would essentially base it on what the regional agency comes up with, and then add additional factors, so that we would be able to make additional adjustments according to what the individual cities would want to do. This is an elective process, and so if the Cities Association Board, in their October meeting, votes to move forward, then we will be back to you later on in the fall or early in the spring, for you to adopt a resolution to formally join the subregion. The benefit of doing this is essentially, we would be in a collaborative process with our sister cities and the counties to determine what would be the best distribution of our regional housing need. We will all still have to plan for all income levels of housing, so I know some cities might be looking at this as a way of getting out of regional housing needs allocation, that is not true. We would still need to plan for affordable housing in our housing element. The benefit is that we would be able to work collaboratively. One of the downsides that some cities have seen is that we may end up with the exact same number that we would have if we did not participate, so some extra time and effort might be going into this process with no real change to our number. So with that, in your packet are pros and cons, draft bylaws, as well as some other materials to help you consider this. The draft bylaws were carefully crafted, so that way, all participating cities would have one elected official on the policymaking body, it would be one vote per city, so there would not be a proportional share based on population, it would be an even playing field. And in addition, if there are trades with the allocation, the, all cities need to agree to those trades, so no one would be imposed upon in terms of having a higher allocation unless they wanted it. So with that, this is primarily for information, but the Cities Association Board did ask that we bring this to the full council, so that way, when the Cities Association Board considers this at their October meeting, that representative to the board will be fully representing its own council, and you will have had a chance to vet this prior to considering the resolution. And that concludes staff report, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, any questions? Councilmember Jensen.
Two questions. The first one you touched on, I just want to emphasize it, is that each city that participates in a potential subregion can reject, there is an opt-out provision, and you could reject, for example, if you got 10 houses instead of one, under the, you can say no.
You could say no to the reallocation, but you'd have to say yes to something, you'd have to have something for your...
No, I understand that our, we are obligated to have planned for, and we have RENA obligations, and if we were to enter into a subregion, and they wanted to give us more than our obligation, we could say no.
Correct.
Okay. My second question is, you said it was primarily for information, do you want a motion?
That's really up to the council, I think, for our Cities Association representatives, I think, at a minimum, a little bit of discussion as to whether or not you would be inclined to participate. From my experience, having worked through several cycles of RENA methodologies, this is the first time this county has been in a position to participate in a way that would be meaningful, so I think there are some benefits to moving ahead, but, you know, this is, this is an election that you would be able to make.
Okay, any further questions at this time? Councilmember Sec.
Ms. Pervetti, I just wanted to clarify, you mentioned that when a trade occurs, the cities have to agree? It's just the two-part, two cities that are involved, right? It wouldn't be the full subregion?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, further questions? So let me open up to verbal communications. No cards over there, I see. Would anybody wish to address us on this item? Seeing nobody rushing forward, I will close the verbal communications on this item, come back to council. Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Understanding that a motion is not mandatory, I think it could be helpful, so I'm going to go ahead and rec, move that this council recommend its interest in participating in a RH in a subregion.
Okay, do I have a second? Councilmember Jensen.
Enthusiastically second that motion. I remember, way back when, when I first got on this council, I was very interested in this issue, and I learned that there were other cities that were collaborating in order to control their RENA numbers, and that, at that time, back in 2012, Los Gatos had missed an opportunity to do that, and that they ended up, Los Gatos ended up protesting, if you will, with A-BAG, its numbers. It was too late, and we didn't have that opportunity, and we'd already missed out on the opportunity to join. I don't think it's a downside that our numbers are the same. There's only an upside in trying to figure out regionally, just like traffic, how this works. I know Ms. Pervetti, thank you very much, has been working hard on this, so this is my very enthusiastic second to the motion.
Okay, and I'll also say that I don't see a downside on it, it's worth, the potential wasted effort, if nothing but the original, if we get nothing but the original, but it's worth seeing what might happen, and hopefully, maybe giving us some options. Other comments? Seeing none, then I'll call a question, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Okay, now we move on to Item Number 11, which is a review of our Highway 9 corridor report.
Good evening. Matt Morley, Director of Parks and Public Works, providing a summary. Go ahead and start it, Shannon, I'll back up. There you go. On October 17th, the council authorized the Highway 9 corridor study, and we've been working on that since then. We're bringing it back to you for your consideration tonight. Most of the corridor is controlled by Caltrans, and of course, they typically follow the lead of the local jurisdiction in terms of what the needs are, so these are some of the ideas that came out of the study, emphasizing safety. The report follows, it does include a significant amount of engineering work in the background, and that is to set us up for future grant opportunities, as well as making sure that Caltrans is on board with any recommendations that we end up bringing forward to them. I'm going to go through a presentation. If you want to just move it forward for me? So, Shannon, within each slide, there's a bunch of brackets, so I'll just ask for the next button push, okay? So I'm going to move us forward geographically, so starting with Missal Avenue, and this is going to be the biggest focus, but if we hit the next button, we'll start there, and this is the recommended addition of a median island, upgrade of the existing radar speed sign. These are traffic calming measures, it also includes a rumble strip. These are traffic calming measures, so the idea is, as vehicles approach from the direction of Montessorino towards that crosswalk at Highway 9, it squeezes the roadway down a little bit, and encourages drivers to slow down through the traffic calming methods. We've also added some other things, like the potential for green bike lanes. The green bike lanes, again, are a visual to drivers to let them know that there's something different going on at this particular location, and will serve to reduce the speeds somewhat. From a long-term perspective, we have included a look at what we're calling channelized right turns, so these are those free right turns that we see throughout the corridor, they're very, very much more efficient from a vehicle perspective, but from a pedestrian and a safety perspective, again, the focus of this study, they create some hazards, so over the long term, we would look potentially to make some adjustments here and remove these channelized right turns, and you'll see this as a theme throughout. And then if we move forward to really where the focus is at this particular location on the crosswalk, we have a couple of items that we want to talk about here. We have a series of potential alternatives for us with a recommendation. One of the alternatives is rectangular rapid flashing beacons, and this is our typical solution at crosswalks where we have pedestrians crossing the road. They're LED lighted crosswalks where the beacons on the signs flash brightly for the vehicles, and the lights are activated by a pedestrian when they approach the crosswalk. They're fairly effective, it's an upgrade to what's there now, which is a simple round beacon, and it's not LED, so this would be more of an in-your-face type of a thing for the drivers, and let them know that a pedestrian is in the crosswalk. We suggest pairing this with a raised crosswalk, so the raised crosswalk would also slow drivers down, there'd be notification to the drivers that the crosswalk is raised, and allows for slowing down the speeds. So the combination of those items really pulls the speeds down, and alerts the drivers to folks that are in the crosswalk. The nice thing about this is it has no impact to traffic along the corridor, so as you're well aware, the traffic is very congested and can be slow at times, the coordination between University and Santa Cruz is difficult, so adding another traffic-controlled device, as we'll talk about in a few seconds, can be challenging. This does not have as significant an impact on the traffic that might flow through the area. So there are trade-offs in both directions. Our second item that we've proposed as an option and are recommending is what is called a Hawk crosswalk, Hawk Beacon. A Hawk Beacon, and I'll show you a little bit more about it, because I think it's important to understand what it does. A Hawk Beacon allows a pedestrian to notice the drivers that they want to cross, and it also provides a red signal for, a red beacon for the drivers that is essentially equivalent to a stop sign, so the drivers have to stop until the pedestrian's crossed. And if we advance, I think the slide, we'll see a little video, and it's... It'll take a second to load, probably, as it's catching up with YouTube. Or not, I'll talk through it, because we can do it that way. Technology's not our friend today. So, what a Hawk crosswalk is, is a mast arm, so a big arm like a traffic signal that's suspended over the traffic, so it's right there in the driver's face. As a pedestrian approaches the crosswalk, they push the button, and it sets a signal to this beacon that flashes a yellow light, so the yellow light starts flashing, and that alerts the drivers that they need to proceed with caution, just like you would see on any other traffic situation where you see a yellow light. As the yellow light moves through its progression, the pedestrian at that point has a red hand still on the pedestrian signal, so they're not to cross. That then switches to a red solid light for the vehicles. The red solid light, like any red solid light, means to stop, and so the drivers have a limit line where they're to stop their vehicle and wait, and at that point, the pedestrian would receive the walk sign with a countdown timer, and be able to do their crossing. Shortly thereafter, from a timing perspective, that solid red light starts to, turns into a flashing red light. The flashing red light, much like any flashing red light that you see in a traffic situation, tells the driver that they can proceed when it's safe to do so, so when the pedestrian has cleared the crosswalk. Once, and so then, at that point, the drivers can proceed, so it helps with the trap from a traffic flow perspective. Subsequent to the flashing red light, it switches off, so it goes back dark to a non-functioning beacon, so there will be nothing for the drivers to see and... in terms of lighting up there and traffic can flow as, as, as it typically would. So there's, there's some advantages and some disadvantages. I will say the, the HAWK signal is in place in quite a number of areas and growing in population, in popularity in the, in the Bay Area. As more and more jurisdictions take them on, they work really well for an area where you're trying to get pedestrians across a, a busy street. They're used on the El Camino across six lanes of traffic. This is at this point, two lanes of traffic. So it could be effective in that particular location. They do stop the traffic. So there is a delay while the traffic is stopped there for the traffic. So in this particular case, there would be coordination that would occur with the, the signals at San, at Santa Cruz and University to, to maximize the, the flow of traffic while, while with the trade-off of, of additional safety at that intersection. The HAWK does, would not impact traffic flow at Massal entering Highway 9. So it would actually probably provide an additional opportunity for cars to slip into the traffic flow at that particular location as vehicles were stopped from, from the HAWK, for the HAWK light. But it would not have another impact from that perspective. And then so moving on to the HAWK, off of the HAWK and talking about the next option, and that's a full traffic signal at that location. The study did look at a traffic signal. As you may know, the traffic, a traffic signal is evaluated in terms of a signal warrant. A warrant, a warrant study considers nine different criteria for whether a signal is justified at a particular location. This particular warrant study identified one of the nine warrants that was, was triggered and that warrant was the AM peak hour, which is considered a fairly weak warrant to, to meet. So it's sort of the bare, very bare minimum of, minimum of justifying a signal. We did not recommend that, the signal there because of the impacts that we think it will have, both on the traffic flow on Highway 9, but more importantly, on encouraging cut-through traffic through, through the Almond Grove neighborhood. That comes by way of vehicles knowing that they're learning or individuals learning that, that there is a, a signal there and taking advantage of that signal to bypass the, the intersection of Santa Cruz and Highway 9 as they're coming into town, on their commute currently, where they would take Highway 9 or Santa Cruz Avenue to Highway 9 and then out towards Saratoga. So we feel that, that the warrant, the, the signal is probably not the, the best solution in this particular case. We are asking for, for the council to consider, consider the, the, the HAWK signal moving forward. And the, the grant opportunity that we're looking for is an HSIP grant. So a, a safety grant that is available very soon that we'd like to apply for. The combination of the HAWK signal with the raised median and an advanced beacon associated with that raised beacon to draw attention at that crosswalk is what we, we suggest would be a great opportunity and probably the most competitive project from an HSIP perspective. And there's a calculation that goes into the, to the HSIP grant that identifies the competitiveness of the projects. On the board now, you can see the different costing. The rectangular rapid flashing beacons are, are the most inexpensive at $111,000. Because the HSIP grant is federal dollars, it really begs the question of is it worth the amount of effort that goes into recovering those dollars from the federal government at $111,000? So the, the trade-off there, there's, there's probably that much staff work just in, in recovering the, the grant costs. The HAWK is, is over half a million dollars if you combine it with a median island. And then the traffic signal is up there as well. We also have some biking pedestrian improvements that we're, we've captured there in terms of cost for your consideration. Those probably would not fit into the HSIP grant and the town, we would recommend that the town look to fund those through our, either our payment program or our own internal capital funding in, in the future. And then as far as the remove, the removing the channelized right, right turn, those right turns are very expensive to remove, as you can see. We would recommend that this be something that we look at as a long-term solution and not a, a short-term solution with the potential of connecting it to a future development that might occur in the area and funding it. Having the, the developer fund that is part of the project, project requirements. So that was the busy intersection. We'll go to some of the easier ones. Santa Cruz and Highway 9 at Santa Cruz and at University sort of combined. Starting one more click at this particular location here. We're recommending the addition of new green bike lanes to increase the safety. The crosswalks at this location are, have a bend in them, which is not considered a standard crosswalk now from an ADA perspective. So we're recommending reconfiguring the crosswalk to make them, to make them straight. Make sure I didn't miss anything there. And then as well on this particular intersection, if you advance one more. On University, we are also adding the green bike lanes and then advancing one more. And again, we have blowing up the, this intersection at Santa Cruz and University. One more click. We're removing the, again, recommending the removal of the channelized right turn lanes. And you can, I think, see because this is a lot more frequently used intersection, what this does to this intersection and how much those right turn lanes are used. So it would definitely change traffic dynamics, but make for safer crossings for pedestrians. Again, we're not recommending doing this out-of-town funds immediately as there may be a potential for future development projects to, to cover some of these costs. But they are an opportunity for future, future safety improvements. The costs for these projects are identified here. Fairly efficient green bike lane and crosswalks that we would suggest bringing forward through our capital improvement program. Moving down the road to State Route 17 and, and Highway 9, largely because this is a project that we're considering through Measure B. We didn't spend as much time looking at structural improvements here, knowing that we'll be moving a project forward through, through Measure B in, in short order and allowing that project to drive the conversation. We did take a look at it from a pedestrian perspective in terms of what we could do in the short term to make some improvements. The biggie there was trimming back some foliage to allow for some great, greater visibility at the crosswalks to add some additional signage that is more visible to the vehicles and to, to do the improvements that way. And that would be something we'd work with Caltrans on. And it's fairly inexpensive. Looking at Alberta Way, moving down the way, we, we did require a number of improvements with Alberta Way in conjunction with the improvement project there on the, the development project on Alberta Way. We have some additional projects that we're considered, we'd consider recommending there, including radar speed signs to draw attention to the speeds, especially as you're heading downhill towards Highway 17. Although we didn't notice a, a lot of speeding there, I think it's still a worthwhile improvement. There's also the potential for new bike lanes along, some areas are there, a good number of which will come with the Alberta Way improvement. And then cleaning out the, the foliage in that particular area, again, from a visibility perspective. And then moving up to Las Gatas Boulevard. The improvements here also remove the, the channelized right turns over the long-term. And then in the short-term, add some pavement markings, including what we call shark's teeth, which is sort of a, a stop line for vehicles as they're approaching a crosswalk. So that would be the, the interim modification to create some additional safety there, as well as adding some signage there to enhance that intersection. Again, the, the channelized right turns are expensive and do have that impact to traffic. So we, we would look to do this as we were able to identify funding for additional safety improvements into the future. And these are the costs associated there. So you can see again, on the last line there where the, the channelized right turn improvements are pretty significant. Largely that means the replacement of the traffic signal arms. So there's a higher cost because of that. So that concludes the presentation and we're here to support the discussion.
Questions? Councilmembers Jensen.
I have several if I might.
Go ahead.
My first question is, Mr. Morley, you said we're recommending the green bike lanes as part of a capital improvement project. Do you want a motion or indication now? Or is that going to come back to us at a six-month review of our budget? Or some such?
So I don't think I need a motion on the, on the green bike lanes now. I think great, the discussion on whether that's something that you see as a, as a warranted improvement would certainly drive what we bring forward and, and the priorities that we recommend in our capital improvement program in the future.
My second question has to do with the grant for HSIP and HAWK and RRFB. Is there any reason why those can't proceed simultaneously? So for example, the council said, while we're waiting to see if we get a grant for the HAWK, let's put in the RRFB. Is there any reason that that can't happen?
No, there's not a reason why that can't happen. I think it's something that we could move, we could move forward with. I think we would, I don't know the timeline on the HSIP grant specifically, but I think we would know probably before we could implement the, the RRFBs that, the, the status of the grant. But if that's the direction the council would prefer us to take, we would explore that and probably provide an update sometime in the near future on, on what that timeline looks like.
Well, my, my real question is, if the council wanted to do something there and the cheaper alternative is the RRFB and we find the money from somewhere other, we don't know if we're going to get federal dollars or whether the administration is even going to give anybody federal dollars for this kind of thing. So could the council direction be, please put in RF, whatever it is, the, the big blinking lights? And why don't you apply for a grant while you're at it?
Yes, that's possible.
Okay. And my final question is for Mr. Morley and Chief DeSena. I didn't understand the HAWK mass. You're calling it mass or something. Do they actually come across the road like a railroad crossing?
They don't. They're, they're fixed. They're up above the roadway. So they're amassed in that they, that they protrude over the roadway, that they're right in the driver's vision as they're approaching it. So they draw the, the most attention. But they're not, they're not movable at all. They stay fixed in the air.
Okay. And then my question for Chief DeSena is, and hopefully, hopefully you'll know what I'm talking about. If you don't, just feel free to say so. Because I know that you were at San Jose State. There is a new crosswalk, probably a year old, on 10th Street that goes from the San Jose State Track over to the football field and the baseball practice area. There's a new median. There's four lanes of traffic. There's a new median spot that's put in. And it's a crosswalk that's activated by people who are crossing and it actually makes a red light. But there's no mass across. Do you know what I'm talking about? And do you know whether that's a HAWK or not?
I'm fairly sure it's not a HAWK. They've made some incredible improvements, as you know, down at South Campus. I'm not particularly familiar with that. The HAWK, like I said, I, I, my staff expressed some concerns about the HAWK, but it's only really lack of familiarization. It actually sounds like a pretty good system. And keep in mind, for cops, there are two things cops don't like, is the way things are and change. So I think, I think PPW has been very good about educating the community in terms of, of, you know, public safety issues. So if we were to get the HAWK, I'm sure that... The concern was that when, when the, the HAWK kind of goes off, when it's not activated. So there's some concern that a driver who's aware of vehicle code would look at that and realize it, assume it's a non-functioning traffic signal, then stop and then proceed when it's safe. And in fact, that's not the case. But again, I, I think with education with the community, I, I don't see that that would be a big problem.
Thank you. Well, if it, if it is anything like the signal that's between the track at San Jose State and the baseball field that goes across 10th Street, I travel that all the time. And there is, and it's quite effective. It makes you stop. It lights up in advance. You could see the people. There's a median where they stop and you know when you can go and when you can stop. So I don't know if that's a HAWK or not, but it's a good thing.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. Mr. Morley, you were talking about the cost of the, the right turn lane removal. And I saw different numbers and I was trying to keep up with you. But if you're looking at one right-hand turn, you're going from Santa Cruz onto Highway 9. One right-hand turn. Is that $158,000? Or what is, what are the components of the totality of the cost for one intersection?
So it's going to depend on the number of channelized right turns at that particular intersection. So let's start with Massal, where there's only, there's only one channelized right turn.
I'm going to jump in.
Yes.
Don't do Massal. Do, do Santa Cruz.
Okay. So at, at Santa Cruz, there are four channelized right turns. We actually don't recommend removing the channelized right turn from southbound Santa Cruz to, to westbound Highway 9 because of the, the large turn pocket there and the amount of traffic that it carries. But for the other three, the, the cost is $750,000.
For the three?
For the three.
Okay. So it's $250,000 each. And then when I read the staff report and what you had said and recommended, the HAWK seemed like a really good thing. Then I was reading Mr. Roadshow and there was a letter to Mr. Roadshow and they were listing the things they didn't like and the HAWK was one of them. Other than what we've heard already, is there anything that you know of that would cause people who are knowledgeable not to like the HAWK?
So from, from my perspective, the, the HAWK, and I think that the chief hit on it a little bit. The HAWK sends some mixed messages if you consider it to be a traffic signal. It's deliberately called a HAWK beacon, not a HAWK signal. And I might have alluded to, called it a, a signal erroneously in the, even in the, in the staff memo. The difference between a, a signal and a beacon is the absence of a, of a green light. So the Hawks, the HAWK beacon does not have that green light. It has the yellow and the red and it signals different things to the driver. All of that is very confusing. So there's a learning curve. And in the memo, I, I said, it's a learning curve, much like when we had green bike lanes introduced. There's a learning curve and a significant amount of education. If you remember, we had sandwich boards with a sign and a, and a QR code on them for people to scan and figure out how to, what do these, what does this brand-new green paint on the road mean? And, and we'd have to do that again, I think, in, probably in, in even a more expanded way for, for the HAWK signal. The good news is that regionally, they're, they're, they're being put in in a number of places. El Camino has them. Santa Clara really likes them. They, they have them. And the example that I was supposed to show you was, was right outside of Fioriello's Restaurant, where there's a, a HAWK signal that works really well in terms of getting people across the intersection. So from a functional perspective, they seem to work. There is a ton of confusion for drivers coming out of it. So when the, when the solid red turns to flashing red, a number of drivers often don't know that they can proceed at that point. But that's really not the end of the world. It, it just means that they'll sit there for a few seconds longer until the light goes off and then they'll proceed. So from a safety perspective, I think they're, they're super effective. From an education perspective, there's a ton of work that we'd have to do to make them happen.
Okay. And just for another piece of input, I don't know what kind of system Ms. Jensen experienced at San Jose State, but it sounds like something that, you know, could be examined. Sound good.
Councilmember Sack.
So I was going to just ask, Mr. Morley, do you know where the closest area we could look at a HAWK?
So there are a number on, on, on the El Camino in Santa Clara. So those would be the best ones to take a look at.
Santa Clara, okay.
And the video that was linked in your memo that might have played up here at one point. And I don't know, Shannon, if you could dig through the memo and see if you can pull up that link? Or, or even Google Santa Clara HAWK. That might, might be able to play it.
Okay.
But, but that, that's a great, a great location to, to see it and how it functions and it gets fairly well-used.
And the second question is, have you had any conversations with your colleagues in Santa Clara about how, what kind of education campaign they had to better promote and have their own residents understand?
Yeah. So a, a lot of, a lot of outreach to, to the users to make sure they understand it. The, the push button actually has an explanation of what it means to the pedestrians. So those are the easy ones because you've got them captured there for a few seconds where they have the time to, to read when, when they should progress across the street. The drivers are a little bit more difficult, especially you can imagine on Highway 9 where, where folks are, are coming and going regionally. Where they don't, they don't necessarily have the daily exposure to it. So over time, we would expect that they would learn and then we would expect that the progressive, as, as the progressive nature of this, this device takes hold and, and they're, they're exposed to it more, in more and more other locations, that it will be, become common. You want to play that for us real quick? It's, it's a minute and a half. It's probably worth taking time to look at if you can maximize that window. So this is, this is crossing, what a pedestrian would do crossing the street. And it's a typical, just a typical crosswalk. That's what the HAWK looks like when it's not on. And that's what the pedestrian sees when they're standing before they push the button or, or while they're waiting for the signal to change. You see the pedestrian sign there. Great amount of information there. Flashes yellow. So you can see it's not a typical signal. It's sort of that three-lighted, new-looking device. Yellow means prepare to stop. So you come up to the line and you stop. While, while the line is at the double, those are red lights. The pedestrian at that point would get the, the walk signal and be able to progress across. And then it switches to, to a countdown as a pedestrian is moving across. The, the light begins this stro- The light begins this strobing red. So it tells the drivers that when, like any flashing red sign that you see on the street, when it's clear, when there's no pedestrians in the crosswalk, you can begin. And so you'll see the drivers on the other side. You may even notice in this video a little bit where some of the drivers sort of try and figure out what to do. Some of them go, some of them stop when they get to the crossbar. So there's still a little bit of confusion there. And then the light turns out, and things go back to normal. And that's a four-lane road all the way across. So it's fairly broad. So across two lanes, it would be fairly quick, we would suspect. And that really helps from an effectiveness, efficiency of traffic.
Okay. Other questions? So I had a few questions. If Shannon could queue up the presentation and go back to the picture of Massal a little ways back. I'll start with the first general question. I know we had a death at this intersection, but we've also had a lot of bicycle accidents. I've seen personally at least two guys on the ground after hitting a car. And a lot of that is left turns from westbound 9 onto Massal while somebody's coming down the hill. And I know I biked down this hill a lot. So it's a steep hill, and the speed limit's 35. And it, you know, it's pretty easy for a bicycler to reach 30 miles an hour. At that speed, it's hard for them to stop quickly if somebody pulls in front of them or anything of the sort. I haven't heard anything that addresses that kind of problem at that intersection. That's the first question.
Yeah, so I think the green bike lanes are the focus there. So by bringing more green bike lanes into the intersection area, you begin to notice drivers that there is something going on. There's even, I think, a potential that we could explore to continue the green bike lane in a dashed format across Massal to give drivers even more information that there's a potential biker coming across there. So that would be the recommendation from that perspective.
Second, you know, these are all going to be bicycle-related questions. If we have a raised strip across there to slow people down, that means we're going to change the speed limit down from 35?
So we would look at the speed limit. And I actually don't know if we raise the crosswalk, what that would do. And maybe Jesse can help me with what we were to do for adjustments to the speed limit there. By its nature, I think we'd want to bring it down so that folks could be prepared to come, to cross that.
And so the second part of that question, would you provide a groove or a sneak path for a bike? Because I'm concerned a bike going 30 miles an hour can get launched, depending on what this thing looks like. And how much thought has there been in that? And even if you drop the speed limit to 25 with them coming down the hill, the bike might not, might not slow down to 25. And again, I'm still worried about when they get surprised by this bump, what's going to happen.
Yeah. So I think all good points and things we would want to work through in the engineering, design engineering portion of the project. This is really at a very high concept, sort of really high-level conceptual at this point. So the design would, I think we would flush that out as we went along, and that would be something we would incorporate into consideration.
And then the other thing I look at here with the corner reconstructed, if somebody's making a right turn, are they turning into the lane of flowing traffic? Or they're able to turn into a non-flowing, a new lane, basically?
So again, we'd have to look at the dynamics of the roadway. I think the intent was to move them into the flow of traffic. So what that does is really provides a focus on pedestrians crossing Massal along Highway 9 versus the vehicles getting onto Highway 9. But we would want to make sure that that all worked in the full design as we're progressing.
And so my concern there is 9 can be extremely busy coming down the hill. And now you turn the right turn into the same thing the left turn is, which I do that left turn frequently. And it becomes, okay, is there enough room here for me to zoom through there, right? So now you start a race. Not only the left turn is usually a race when there's a small gap in cars, now you're making the right turn into a race also. I'm worried that that is making things less safe, not more safe. And then the way you have, where you have the corner, it looks like visibility could be impaired a little bit, too, because you're not all the way out into the lane. And it seems like, my recollection is, I think we have a utility box on the corner and some other things. If that's not that visible a corner, I know when I take a right turn there, I know I'd be pushed further with this change. But I know when I take the right turn, you can't really see what cars are coming, and you currently don't need to. But I'm worried about what that does. And the second piece to it, I look at the green lane, bike lane. So you've now brought bicycles traveling 30 miles an hour down to a car that may be trying to sneak around the right turn and giving them less bailout room. Again, I'm worried about what the, you know, whether this is decreasing safety for bicycles.
So I think all of those, or a number of those items are things that we've actually discussed in terms of where we're at in the design and how they would actually work into a project. There's a monument sign for the commercial buildings there on the corner that inhibits visibility. Really, and as you can see, the design right now is really limited to some lines on an aerial. And that's the conceptual look at it. We would look, and that's the long-term perspective of this, we would look to do a full-out engineering design and review of it to make sure that it was safe for pedestrians and cyclists and vehicles all at once. We talked about narrowing the Massal travel lane that's headed towards Highway 9 to make it so that only one vehicle could fit in that particular travel lane at a time. All of those things are ideas and considerations that we would want to look at in terms of moving this forward. It becomes, again, the balance of the efficiencies of traffic, the safety of bicyclists on Massal, and the safety of pedestrians on Highway 9 as well. I'm also aware of a number of accidents of bicyclists going sort of the wrong direction on Highway 9 at that particular location. And so some of the considerations might make that safer, make for safer options there. So a lot of work to do, again, really conceptual in nature, and wanting to get your ideas on the concept and whether that's something we should be looking to include in potential grant opportunities for the future, in requirements for development projects in the future, at least from an exploration, research, and design engineering perspective, even if we don't implement, or if it's something that you just don't feel comfortable with at all in terms of balancing safety and efficiencies.
And if I could just go back to the comment about trying to make the right turn with the change, I, my impression is the bicycle accidents have been people making left turns, trying to race the holes in the cars, and not real, you know, if you're trying to race holes in the cars, you don't look at the bicycles as carefully. If we're creating another race situation, it's more opportunities for people to miss the bicycles coming down the hill.
Yeah.
If you could back up one slide, I think there was one without the change in the corner?
I don't think we included that.
No, okay. So I was wondering, instead of changing the corner, could we draw a green bike lane straight down so that it starts off? You've got two lanes. You've got the regular lane of flow, and then the right turn guys. And you put a green bike lane between them. So there's a clear place for when the bikes come down the hill, this is where I'm supposed to be if I end up with cars in between me. And then draw the transition that you usually do with the dash lines to then bring them over to the right. Instead of, I mean, your reason you wrote on this was bicycle safety. And I'm wondering if it might be safer just to provide a green box between the two lanes of traffic for the bikes to be in, remembering they're coming pretty fast. Someplace for them to go if a car appears, and then have a transition.
I understand exactly what you're saying. And yeah, we could take a look at that as a potential option as well.
Okay. Other questions, other councilmembers? Okay, Councilmember Jensen.
I just want to understand what the end result is that staff is looking for. Because this sounds all very conceptual. When I read the report, I thought, okay, you want us to say you can go get a grant. But now we're having discussions that involve all kinds of stuff. So what is it that you're looking for from us?
So our recommendation still remains that we think that the Hawk is the appropriate signal, the appropriate treatment for this intersection. The H-SIP grant is due this month. So we recommend the council providing the authority to the town manager to move forward with the H-SIP grant in order to allow us an opportunity to implement that. But we did want to make sure that you had the options and understood the trade-offs. And I think the mayor's identified some of the trade-offs along the way. Again, the grant allows us to get into the next phases of the engineering. We would bring this back to the council for discussion in terms of the design throughout the course of the design. So you'd still have the opportunity to provide input on that. But we would, I think, tonight be looking for direction on the particular main part of the treatment, whether it be the RFBs or the Hawk or the traffic signal at that location.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a comparable question because I was just re-reviewing conclusion and next steps. If we assume that there are issues out there with regard to the Hawk, and if we assume that, based on what you're saying, it could be a really great thing. But then you go forward, and you ask for the grant, and then you get the grant. And then are we, like, locked into using the Hawk?
So we would be locked into that as the scope of our project to comply with a grant. So if we didn't move forward with the Hawk at that point, we would not be able to collect on the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Vice Mayor Leonardi.
Thank you, Mayor. The difference between the Hawk and the traffic signal seems quite negligible in price. It's only, what, less than $200,000 in cost?
Yeah, they're fairly close. There's infrastructure involved with both of them. We were concerned with the signal about the impacts to the neighborhoods, and that's why we avoided the signal.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen.
Probably beating a dead horse, but I'm going to try. What I'm trying to understand is if you, there is only one path forward. Because I could see saying, sure, apply for a grant. If you get it, great, that money goes to that. But, council, you may determine that there are other things you want to do. So I want to know if a motion to go forward with grant funds for a Hawk is to the exclusion of things like an RFB, additional green lanes, et cetera. Because if it's to the exclusion, it could make a difference in at least how I would move forward.
It's definitely not to the exclusion of those items. And it's really setting the course on pursuing a preferred alternative with other alternatives still left open in the future. And I'll give you an example of one that may not be in our control. If we decide that, if the council gives us direction to move forward with H-SIP grant towards the Hawk Signal, and we bring that forward to Caltrans, Caltrans may, for some reason, say that they are not comfortable with it at that location. I don't think that will be the case. I think they're going to support us in this. But it's a potential. And at that point, we have our grants submitted in for a Hawk, but without Caltrans support, so it's not likely to happen. So there's a number of variables. This allows us to take that next step towards pursuing the project. And again, we would bring back the design to the council for review along the way. The council could adjust it. We could move forward with an RFB in fairly short order. We'd need to do a budget adjustment to be able to account for the costs associated with that, to add a capital project. And we'd work with the finance department to do that and bring it back to you on consent item in the future if you wanted to fast-track something along that line as an additional project. So they're not mutually exclusive with the exception of we wouldn't want to do a signal and a Hawk. Obviously, those don't go together.
Vice Mayor Leonardi, and keeping in mind, I haven't yet opened verbal communication.
I hope to keep it brief. So to me, it seems like the Hawk is kind of a dumb signal. And a light can be timed to be a smart signal, which would overall, could improve the flow of traffic. Can you comment on that?
So the report did look at the projected impacts to traffic through the installation of a signal. I think it starts out with a bad level of service and impacts the other intersections similarly. So creates what is already a congested corridor and creates more congestion, especially in the commute hours. So I don't know that, even with the coordination with the other signals, that it becomes something that is a smooth sailing-type corridor in that area, which is why having something like an RFB or a Hawk, where it's only activated when necessary, keeps the traffic flow as, sort of as normal as possible outside of those times of need.
Okay, let me open verbal communications. Does the clerk have any cards? No cards? Would, I'd be surprised if somebody didn't want to come talk. Let's start with Angelia Dorner.
Angelia Dorner, still proud, but prior resident of the Almond Grove. The front of this card says, "We all express ourselves in various and beautiful ways." Personally, I like to bitch. There should be a lot of people in this room right now. There was no adequate publication or notification of this 133-page report that would be available. How many people flock in here when there are traffic considerations for cut-through traffic, bicycle safety, Highway 9, Massal, et cetera? Why am I going to be almost the only person up here speaking? I think it's a crime. I also think that the fact that yesterday, all day long, you could not get into the current agenda and therefore download the report to read, including as late as... And I'm talking about even using the links in the emails that you sent to people saying that the packet's available. All day long yesterday, it was not available. Last night, 9 o'clock at night, it wasn't available. So I wasn't even able to print this thing until today. Obviously, I didn't have time to read any of it. I'm also extremely upset that not only was no public notice, but there's no public input on this whole report. Did you do any kind of prominent notification in the Los Gatos Weekly? Was it included in What's New? I don't think it was on Next Door Neighbor. On the Grove email list? Why didn't you at least put something out to all the hundreds of people that live in the Almond Grove that you send out an email to every single week? Why don't you send it to the contact list for all the people on Alberta Way that were here and packing this place when that prior development project was being done? And what about the businesses? You know what I did yesterday afternoon? When I couldn't get on that report, I went over and talked to Republic Bank. I went over and talked to Orange Coast Title. I went over and talked to Pinot Cleaners. Did any of you talk to them? They are very interested in this report and very interested in what happens at that particular intersection. The people at the cleaners could tell you how many times that telephone pole has been banged into with accidents there. And until you guys start paying attention to taking care of some of the vehicular traffic issues, you will never improve pedestrian and bicycle safety adequately. Because the cars will still be banging into each other and competing for very limited space, which you now want to take away as well. I'm very happy for your comments. Okay, let me see. Channelized right turns, I can't believe you're thinking of taking those away. What are the projections for the increased wait times at these signals for all of the people who currently use them to be stuck, waiting for the light to change to turn right? And then the people who now have to wait longer for those people to get out of their way to go through an intersection? I know this was something that was suggested 20 years ago, and it does not make sense in today's traffic. What about our smart signals? Ms. Jensen, please. What about smart signals? One at Massal, one at Santa Cruz.
Thank you.
And one at University. That should do the trick.
Any questions?
And this is the worst intersection possible for a Hawk-type device, which the public, and communication to the public is the most important thing to make it effective.
Okay, next up, Maria Risto.
Hi, Maria Risto, 85 Broadway. I really appreciate the visuals with this. I read the safety study, but I didn't get a chance to look at all the diagrams. I think one of the things that's really important at Massal to go with whatever we do to improve pedestrian safety is the traffic calming measures. So the island, bringing up the visualization of bike lanes by making them green, all of that can help. In terms of the three options, the blinking light, it would be amazing if we could get... something better while we're waiting for a HAWK signal. If we decide to go with the HAWK signal, I like Councilmember Jensen's idea of potentially also looking at improving the visibility there. I think as cars, this is an intersection that I walk at least once a week, and I bike very often. And I look at it with a view toward what it was like when I walked my children through there, what it's like when I watch school kids go through there. The crossing across Highway 9 feels very risky. I've pushed the button and watched at least three cars go past while the lights blinking. You know, I'm smart enough not to step off the curb, so brighter lights will be good. I think they need a red light right in front of their face. I think there will be more opportunities for input on the other issues around there. But I would say, as I thought about a traffic signal versus a HAWK versus blinking lights, the HAWK occupies a lot of Mr. Roadshow column space. There's always people bringing up questions every couple of months, but it is a new-ish type of signal. I'm sure people did not understand what a red light with a yellow light with a green light, you know, whatever meant at one point, and we can get there. I think the idea that there's a red light while a pedestrian's going sends a strong message, and I think we need that more than a blinking light. A traffic signal, in my mind, is going to then make that intersection, if it were to be timed with University and with Santa Cruz Avenue, it's going to make it a pedestrian nightmare to cross that street. I cross University pretty regularly with my dog, and standing there sometimes for three minutes, waiting for the light to change, you just feel like you're on this desolate island and cars are zooming by. So, to continue the flow of traffic on Highway 9, that traffic signal would be there to accommodate cars and pedestrians. And if it were timed to work with Santa Cruz Avenue and University, that means it would be a pretty slow turnover. And right now, what we've got on school mornings is if a cluster of kids gets there and they push the button, they could all cross as needed. Otherwise, that light is always green for the cars. So, I don't think I'm expressing myself very well, but I think that the HAWK is the best compromise. What I have seen, and I think that is the standard now, what I've seen is something similar to perhaps what Councilmember Jensen was talking about. In Sunnyvale, there's a four-lane road by a school, and there's just a trail that comes out, and that's just a green light all the time, and it turns red for pedestrians.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Risto? Seeing none, thank you. Would anybody else wish to address us? That's a yes, I guess. Okay, Lee Quintana.
Lee Quintana, 5 Palm Avenue. I just want to make two comments. This isn't the only time when an important topic has come up that has not had adequate noticing to the public, or the report has not been available for a whole day or the better part of a day on the website, or is noticed on What's New. I think that's really important if we consider ourselves a town that wants to have citizen participation. It's hard to have it if you don't know what's going on, and you try and can't find out. Secondly, I don't know about the HAWK. I've never seen one. It seems more complicated to me than the type of signal that Councilperson Jensen was talking about. That seems much more straightforward and easier to understand and would seem to accomplish about the same thing, except it really tells you when you have to stop and when you go. It's not the same as a signal, which I think would back up traffic and be a real problem. And I don't think, it's difficult to get coordination of signals when the distance is so small.
Thank you. Any questions? Vice Mayor Leonartis.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Ms. Quintana, did you have the same experience trying to access this report that Ms. Dorner claimed she had?
No, I didn't, because I accessed it before, I think, the night that it came out initially. But had I gone back in yesterday to try and read it, I would not have been able to. I didn't read the whole report when it first came out. I downloaded it. But if I hadn't downloaded it, I wouldn't have been able to go back and look at it. I usually don't download, but because it was so long, I did.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Quintana. Anybody else wish to address us on this one? Is that a yes? So, okay, Larry Maggio.
Hi, Larry Maggio from 16945 Roberts Road. You guys were talking about the HAWK. I know personally, there's like two or three of them along El Comunal Real in Santa Clara, and they're really useful for multi-lane traffic lanes. When they're on single lanes, like up here coming from Highway 9 going into two lanes going into the southbound direction, it's not going to be really effective. It takes time for somebody to hit the button, it goes through a cycle, but if you've got a lot of people that are going to be crossing at some point, given like a minute or two at a time, it's going to block up traffic tremendously. A controlled intersection is what's probably wise, and having a smart controlled intersection is even more wise, because then it regulates the flow, and if it's timed with the other intersections, it can be helpful. But the safety issue of, like you were mentioning, Mr. Mayor, is the bicycle traffic that comes down, and it comes down at a rate of speed. And chief law, verified, basic speed law, it's got to be something that the bicyclists can actually handle. And we've got something that's out of control right now with people trying to make left turns onto Massaul. I know personally, when I'm there trying to make a left turn, it's a challenge. And with that, we have to do something about the traffic with the bicycles. So, the green markings would be a good indicator, but a controlled intersection would warn them in advance that they need to come to a stop. Pedestrians are able to cross on a controlled cycle, and then the vehicles are be able to go back and forth on a controlled cycle. On the HAWK, which is, you know, I think Mr. Morley did a great job on doing research so far on it, multi-lanes, Los Gatos Boulevard, maybe down by where the Citibank is, somebody has to cross those multi-lanes, the HAWK would be most effective on a roadway like that. And that's what I have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Maggio? Seeing none, thank you. Anybody else wish to address us? Seeing none, I'll close the verbal communication, come back to council for more comments. Councilmember Sack.
Okay, so, just some, I just want to make sure I understand the process for this. So, Mr. Morley, you mentioned that the HSIP grant has a deadline, and can you just confirm when that is?
I believe, good question, I believe it's the end of August, so upon us shortly.
Okay. And again, if we were awarded the grant, then more engineering and design would go into it, and then that would come back to the council at a public hearing for further discussion and evaluation?
Absolutely, as does the design on all of our CIP projects.
Okay. And again, I'm going to confirm that to move forward with a grant application, it does not mean that we can't move forward with some short-term projects such as the RFB.
Correct.
Okay. And then my third question is, when this, let's say we are awarded this grant, and you do a full engineering review, and more detailed analysis shows that there's a better alternative. If that traffic study showed a better alternative, that's a basis for, or whether Caltrans looks at it, that's a basis for us not to move forward with this, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, so, in terms of the study that we did, I sort of highlighted it from a high-level perspective. There is, in the back of the report, a significant amount of engineering work and calculations, including the efficiencies of the intersections and what changes with the efficiencies of the intersection based on the treatments that are proposed. So, what does a HAWK do? What does a RFB alone do? What does a traffic signal do? And those, the reason we presented them in the order of RFB, HAWK, traffic signals, that's a progression of the impacts from a traffic perspective. And then on page three of our report, it's sort of a summary table of what the level of those impacts are across a number of things, including the safety enhancements, the acceptance of use by the end users, the increase of cut-through traffic, the cost, and the delays to the streets. So, a lot of information in the report to substantiate the recommendation. But of course, we would want to bring this back to you along the way for continued conversations as the project develops.
And one final question there. I don't know the answer to this. The timing on the light, is that controlled by the town or by Caltrans on Highway 9? I hear different things, and if you could just confirm.
It's controlled by Caltrans.
Okay.
But with that, they do listen to us, and we provide significant amounts of input into it. As a matter of fact, the latest modification they made was at our request and to our timing standards, so we'll be seeing how that progresses over the next month or so to see if it was an improvement. So, they're, from a partnership perspective, they're doing a pretty good job there. They're not as quick, maybe, as we are, but they're doing a pretty good job.
Councilmember Jensen.
Some questions and maybe a motion. Mr. Morley, I want to understand more about the potential cost of applying for a grant. When you first started off in your presentation, you said staff time in applying for a grant could be as much as the RFB. Is that correct? So, if we authorize a grant, are we authorizing you to spend $150,000 to get the grant?
So, I think it was more in reference of the amount of time and the trade-off for other projects that we could be working on based, sort of compared with the benefit that comes out of that. So, in this particular case, the application for the grant would be done by our Transportation and Mobility Manager. She's currently working on our school busing project. There's other grant opportunities that come up, and it's the trade-off of whether $100,000 in federal dollars is worthwhile in the town chasing. Generally, our experience has been that a small grant amount of federal dollars isn't really worth the effort from a town perspective, given trade-offs on other alternatives for those staff hours.
Follow-up?
Please.
The federal grant that you are contemplating, is it at a full cost of the project, or is it only a portion of the cost of the project?
It's a portion of the project. There's an expectation for a match of about 14%.
Help me with my math. 14%?
Of a half a million dollars, so, you know, in the $60,000, $70,000 range.
So, we could be looking at a cost just to get the grant in staff time of $125,000 plus not working on the school bus pilot and foregoing other possible grants that we could get, and then we have to do a match of $60,000 or $70,000 if we get it.
The match, yes, the matches on the grant that we get, yes.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm ready for a motion unless...
Shall we go with a little more questions first?
Question.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Specter.
Yes, I was trying to pop in there before a motion. I know you've answered this twice, Mr. Morley, but this is going to be the third time. We've gotten a lot of good information from the council and from the community, and that makes, that makes what I want to do less clear. So, if the motion is to approve, you're going forward with the grant application, and let's say you get the money, and then you go forward with your design for the HAWK, and then you come back here because we get a chance to look it over, and between now and then, other issues or other things that we could do at Highway 9 seem good or better, at that point, are we locked into the HAWK?
No, I think that from, if we move forward today with the intent of installing the HAWK, and we find in the future that something came up that we didn't know about or that changes our opinion, then we would work with the granting agency to say, we don't need those dollars, or to reapply those, to ask them to reapply those dollars to a revised project.
And I could probably, because I've dealt with the kind of the exact same situation that did with a roundabout in another town, where in fact, they applied for the grant, they went through the entire process of doing the roundabout and used it for design work and engineering and all the way up for the permits from Caltrans, and then the community just did not want that roundabout. And you just, they didn't go through with the construction project. They paid for all the design, paid for all the engineering, and the project was just never completed because the community just decided they did not want that roundabout. So, it still covers you up for the engineering and design. There's nothing that says with a grant, we're giving you grant money, and you have to follow through with the project or pay us back. It would provide you with that requirement and can't judge the project until it's actually approved by the council.
Thank you.
You had more comment?
Yeah, so, I just wanted to add that this type of conversation, when we're at the conceptual level, is exactly what we need. So, we want to be able to vet a potential project and understand the pluses and minuses and where the council is at on it, so that we can get to a point where we decide we want to move forward or not. So, this is exactly the discussion that we were looking for. So, it leaves a few questions, and that's because it's at that very, very early conceptual stage. But as it moves to a design phase, and we bring back design stages to you, I think some of the answers will become more clear. Or if you decide that this isn't the particular location of the project that you want to move forward, that's fair as well. But we wanted to be able to have that conversation with you now that we have the study done and the opportunity for a grant that aligns right in front of us.
Vice Mayor Leonartis, questions?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Just a couple of comments and perhaps a question to follow up. So, since I can remember, in 1989, when someone ran into my car at that intersection, people have been calling for a light at that intersection for several reasons. One is, as you head towards Montezarino and you want to turn left onto Massaul, that gets difficult sometimes, especially during rush hour. And I think the mayor alluded to bicycle incidents and some things trying to perform that activity. But also, when you are on Massaul and you want to turn left from Massaul onto Highway 9 going towards Montezarino, that is another issue. As well as, when there is no traffic, people come flying down that hill pretty quickly. So, I guess where I'm leading with this question is, why do you think that if we had a full signalized intersection there, that would cause more traffic? Why would it be a detriment to the Almond Grove neighborhood? Or why would it create more traffic?
So, our anticipation in viewing how vehicles are traveling, and so, we de-emphasize the traffic flow and the turn counts and where the traffic was going into and coming from. But as you look at the traffic coming, heading north on Santa Cruz Avenue, especially, for example, in the morning, a lot of those, a lot of those people turn left and head towards Montezarino, Saratoga, Cupertino, that kind of a thing, as they're coming from maybe Santa Cruz or something like that. So, they use that as, as opposed to going up to Highway 9, they use that as sort of a little mini-cut-through route. The reason they don't currently go up to Massaul, and a few already go to Massaul, but the reason they don't is because it's a difficult location to cross, and it takes a lot of time to do that. If we put a signal there, they'll get a green light, and so it'll be easier for them to cross. And that green light will slow, by definition, turn the right on, the light on Highway 9 red and create additional congestion on Highway 9, which will queue up at Santa Cruz and at University, so create delays. That's the analysis that I talked about that is in the report that talks about the impacts of the delays. So, an RFB has very minimal delays because it's really just a flashing light that when somebody wants to cross, very similar to what we have today. A HAWK creates a little bit more delays because it is a red light when somebody wants to cross, but only when somebody, a pedestrian wants to cross. A traffic signal is significantly more, because every time a vehicle comes up on Massaul to that intersection, it's going to create that delay on Highway 9. So, that's the trade-off.
Go ahead.
What would preclude somebody from going to that intersection in their vehicle, jumping out, pressing the HAWK button, getting in their car, and when it turns red, they could turn left? That's what I would do.
Keep that one to yourself. We don't want it to get out.
I hope everyone's watching.
All right, Councilmember Jensen.
And I would run into you. So, I'm going to try a motion. I appreciate that staff has come forward and identified a project that they believe can qualify for a grant. I am normally one who wants to pursue grants. However, competing for a federal grant is much harder than competing for a local grant, and I get that you want to plan ahead. However, there is enough consternation and confusion and question about what a HAWK is, and there's enough staff time and money and investment that has to go into preparing that grant, engineering, matching funds, that it strikes me that, why not just say, okay, well, maybe this is one that we're going to pass on like the other federal grants, and go and get some bang for our buck by putting up a flashing light, an RFB, spending $111,000 on that instead of... $111,000 on that instead of staff time, spending $64,000 to put in green bike lanes, and another something thousand dollars to put green bike lanes all the way down Highway 9, so we get more bang for our buck rather than lining up for a grant, waiting for 10 years, then waiting for the engineering costs to go up and doing some, but why don't we just do something now? So my motion would be to go for the RFB and go for bike lanes in that area. And if it makes sense, a raised crosswalk, though I'm very appreciative of the mayor's comment about launching bicycles, I could definitely see that. But perhaps a vibration road, I know from experience that that's extraordinarily effective. So my motion would be to go for the flashing lights and the green bike lanes just initially to get some money, to invest staff time and effort into our school bus pilot program, and to go for smaller grants that get us a return faster than a federal grant potentially would.
So I have a second to this motion. I have a second for Councilmember Spector. Further comments? Vice Mayor Leonardi.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. So I am interested, first of all, I appreciate the staff's report, and all the information brought forward is very interesting on this, so thank you. Your work is not in vain. I think it's always been a very, this is one of the key intersections in town that definitely needs improvement, and we've heard significant comments over the years about that. So we're doing what we can, although I think that the urgency this evening was to try to meet a deadline for a grant before a certain time. And based on the discussion, I agree with the motion in the sense that that might not be the most, the best use of time and staff resources. I am interested in hearing, or at least learning more about, the intersection that Councilmember Jensen described over by San Jose State. In other words, I would be interested in this coming back with more studies about a full signal on Massaul as well as an alternative, such as what was mentioned by Councilmember Jensen. I think other councilmembers commented on that as well. So I will support the motion to get some things going in the interim, but I do believe we need a more long-term and more impactful solution to this intersection to make it safe. And this councilmember down the road would like to see consideration of either a full signal at that intersection or some alternative. I'm not super-duper keen on the Hawk idea. I think it's confusing. I think of, why don't we just put a railroad crossing there and have it come down? That's kind of what it looks like. So more information needed, but I'll support the motion this evening.
Okay, any more comments? I would, the motion didn't include trim the foliage, but I assume you could probably fit that in too somewhere. And I would also make the comment that, you know, I'm very hesitant. I know this time you're not trying to move ahead on removal of the channelized right lanes, but I'm very hesitant to do those, particularly on Massaul. I'm not sure that's a safer alternative, but the costs are also ridiculous. Three-quarters of a million to remove the three on Santa Cruz Avenue, that's, there's got to be better places to spend our money. I don't perceive that they're, I cross at Santa Cruz Avenue very frequently because I use the Comerica Bank and walk from my house over that way frequently. I walk my dogs down to the bank. I walk my dogs down to Pet People, you know, and I don't see that, you know, cars always stop for me while I'm trying to get out to the pork chop. So I don't perceive that that's worth seven, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars. That's my comments. Councilmember Leon, Vice Mayor Leonardi.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. I would also like to comment, and I know that was not part of the motion, but removing the channelized right turns anywhere in that area, I think would be very detrimental to traffic. I understand that for pedestrians, it could be viewed as safer, but queuing up all those cars to turn right in addition to the rush hour traffic in the morning, it does provide some additional relief, and I think outside of the cost, that would be very bad for us.
Further comments? Okay, I'll call a question. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Looks like it passes unanimously. Does staff need anything else from us?
Thank you very much.
Okay. No other comments from council. Looks like we are adjourned. Thank you.